It's 6:30, so I'll call to order the October 6th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. You want to take the role, Lisa?
Certainly. Elaine Barton?
Here.
John Mungy?
Here.
We have an excused absence for Patrick Bleeze. Eric Brenna?
Here.
An excused absence for Rick Gelbman and Cameron Muick.
Oh, I'm leaving. Welcome.
No.
It's his double.
Oh, I apologize. I had a note that you were gonna... My apologies, Rick Gelbman.
Here.
Cameron Muick?
Here.
Andrew Weiss?
Here.
Lisa Wong?
Here.
And we have Brandy Howell, planning consultant with WSB, and myself, Lisa Ritchie, planning secretary.
Thanks, Lisa. We've got a quorum. So first item is to adopt the agenda. Unless anybody has anything to add, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Rick, seconded by John. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? We have the agenda. Then we have approval of the September 1st, 2022, meeting minutes. Anybody have any additions or corrections? I have one on item, first item. Co-chair Mungy called the meeting to order. Not Barton.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. I had to think about that for a second. The only other thing I noticed was on all of the motions, the one on page three of six for the planned unit development, and the one on, there were two of them on page four of six, one for the comprehensive plan amendment and the other for the zoning text amendment. The wording in the second sentence of each of those, I think, really should be motion carried to recommend approval of the item, not to approve it, since the council, we recommend to the council. I mean, maybe a fine point, but...
I will certainly let time savers...
It makes sense.
I'll make the update.
Anybody have anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the September 1st meeting minutes. Moved by John. Do you have a second?
A second.
Second by Eric. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? We've got the minutes. Then we have meeting open to the public. I think, is there anybody here who wanted to speak, or are they all speaking for something on the agenda? Okay. Do we have anybody on Zoom? Do you know?
We do not.
We don't? Okay. Then we don't have anybody to speak about something not on the agenda. And since, unless anybody objects, since we do have the people to speak about the development concept review, I'd suggest maybe we move that ahead of the public hearing, so that they don't need to sit through the public hearing unless anybody objects.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, so we'll do item seven first. Probably should have done that and the agenda change, huh? Oh, well. So we'll just hop in then to, unless anybody way in the back. Alrighty, then we'll do item seven, which is a review of a development concept for 2395 Margaret Street. So I'll turn it over to our planner, Brandy.
Yep. I'll be just a second. So staff has been in communication with JB Vang, Real Estate Advisors, on this potential development at 2395 Margaret Street. And we held a redevelopment meeting with them a couple of weeks ago to discuss their concept that would redevelop five parcels at the northwest intersection of Margaret and Sepulvede across from City Hall. The team is in the early process of determining the project details, but the current proposal would include 69 apartment units, underground parking, and about 2,000 square feet of commercial space. As it's currently envisioned, the site would cover about a quarter of an acre of a city-owned site at that corner, and it's generally, generally known as Central Park, or at least it says that on our online mapping. So in staff's discussion with their development team, it was indicated to them that there is a strong desire to create some green space in the downtown, and that there may be a public benefit offset as part of this process. So in addition to the other items that we discussed at that meeting, we believe that the proposal's gonna require a PUD because of the density, and it's also gonna likely require a comprehensive plan amendment, just like what we had done for the Lily redevelopment. So the tentative schedule for this project is review, concept review tonight with the Planning Commission. They'll take it to the city council at their October 18th meeting, and then based on any feedback they receive, they may modify their proposal, and then they'll submit application sometime after that. So we'll turn it over to you, and we can have you plug in anything you would like, or I could put my computer up there so you could use the... I've got the documents that you have, if you want. Okay.
So you'll be able to get those up on the screen. So just for the commissioners, this is really like the pre-plan stage at this point. It really truly is a high-level concept review, just for the developers to get any initial feedback from the Planning Commission about any ideas they might have at this stage, knowing that these are not fully developed plans.
I'd just say I definitely appreciate that.
Yes. Yeah. Could we get that on here? Great. There we go. We've got it. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
I am Jackson with JB Vang. I don't know if you guys have heard of JB Vang or not, but we are a St. Paul-based developer, very family and minority-owned, actually, kind of off the west side of St. Paul, near the Midway. And, yeah, I've actually known this site for a while, kind of been looking at it for about three years, actually, now. And it just feels like a good site for this kind of a use. We've looked at a few different variations, and kind of what I wanted to initially do with this proposal that we have in front of you is just really get your feedback as far as the design is concerned, and whether or not we're on the right path, because the next step for us is to really take this out for construction pricing, which is a huge variable that we need to figure out. And so I don't know if there's gonna be any significant changes, and if there is, we'd like to know that prior to doing that. So that's kind of just the gist of it, but I can kind of show you a little bit through the site here, and then I'm gonna have David, who is with Urban Works, who is the architect on this one, kind of walk you through the design. But as you guys probably know where the site is, it's, I mean, not too far away, anyway, but... Yeah? So, yeah, right across the street here, as you can know, this is the City Hall, and this is kind of the proposed outline of the site. And as you can see here, blocked off in purple, this is where the existing park is. Now, I'll have David kind of come up and talk a little bit about kind of the site design, and how we've addressed some of the comments from Morgan, who is the engineer. Go ahead.
Hello, commissioners. David Holland with Urban Works Architecture. Thanks for having us. And you can see that. I'm just gonna make it a little bit bigger, if that's okay. All right. So the task at hand was kind of look at including some commercial space, and then kind of evaluate the number of apartments. Ah, there we go. There we go, on the site. So, you know, we looked at some of the, you know, the recent downtown master plan, and some of the master planning documents. So really looking at some of the primary urban concepts of really holding the street edge, creating a one-story volume along that street edge, and placing the commercial facing what would be, you know, like the public plaza amenity, I think it was mentioned in that master plan. So again, this is just kind of a placeholder of what that plaza might look like. So it could be more green, it could be more flat, but anyway, the idea is just making that public space at Sepulvede and Margaret, right? So it's kind of that interesting, an interesting corner. So we've got enclosed parking, and part of that is really on the first level, but it's all enclosed. You know, from what I understand, there's a little bit of challenge with growing underground. Again, I don't have a full geotechnical report yet at this point, but there was some, at least that's what my understanding is. So we did have 69 units in our original conversations. We kind of scaled it back, because there is a major utility storm line that we're aware of along the west-hand side. So that's like a 40-inch, I think, senator, or storm pipe, I believe, along with power lines. So again, so that kind of scaled it back. So right now, the current concept shows 61 units. So it's got some surface parking around the perimeter. And then here, so as you go up, so levels two, so it's a four-story building, so under the 50-foot, the height guideline with the commercial space. And then we tried to set back that second level, so it's not a, you know, a straight wall building, but really try to mimic that one-story volume that you see all along Seventh and the Downtown and keep that character. So we're showing a little bit of amenity space up in the level two as well. And then level three, four are just apartments. So it's a mix of, you know, studios, ones and twos. Kind of right now, we're showing, it's a few more of the smaller units, based on kind of the feedback that we've got from Jackson and his group, about 2,200 square foot of commercial space. And, oh, and then, so we're gonna go back up to the image. So again, we looked at, right now, these are, again, this is really early, right? So we're kind of looking at some of the, a couple of different design concepts that, and so that's why we showed two options, just to show that we're kind of early in the stage. But nonetheless, we really want, you know, the key concepts are holding, holding the street edge, that one-story volume, and then stepping it back, creating that retail on the corner. So this is option A, which is a little bit more clean. And again, I think, you know, in the downtown, you tend to see more of the flat roofs, a little bit more of the, you know, more downtown, you know, urban-type aesthetics, so that's where this is going. And then the second option here is just a little bit more variation, so trying to make it, break it down a little bit. You know, it's not that big of a building, you know, when you, you know, when you get down to it, so. But still, we'd like to have some balconies, kind of create some life. Again, retail in the corner, and then enclosed parking, but we still want to create that streetfront vocabulary. So I think that's, those are the highlights.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess, again, kind of what I was going to say originally is, we just would really like your feedback on kind of the design, also the site plan, especially. As we're working through a few things, as you know, interest rates have gone quite higher. So something like, you know, is the retail space, is that just absolutely detrimental to this deal? Is it the park space that you guys are really looking for? I mean, we might have to have some ebb and flow, depending on, you know, where the numbers are gonna end up landing with this. But, yeah, just really your feedback on kind of the whole proposal would be great. So any questions, I guess, at this time, would be welcome.
Thank you. Looks like level two and level three are, you show them to be overhanging Sepulvede Boulevard. Is that true?
Nope. They are actually, let me go back to the, oops, the plan. They're a step back, actually, from Sepulvede, so let's see, if I can... So you see the green line right, right here? So there's, there's step, the upper levels are a step back.
They are, okay.
Yep, exactly. And then the, this is the one-story volume of the commercial space, and then there's the kind of plaza or green space, you know. And we kind of looked at it, we're thinking, maybe it's more of like a seating, you know, overflow for the retail, kind of a space to gather, less, you know, it could be green, could be a little bit of both.
That's level one, though. How about two and three in your drawings?
Yep. Whoa, sorry. There you go. Yep, so there... Oh, you know what? You're not seeing the plaza underneath. I'm, I'm sorry about that.
Sure.
And then as far as, are you talking also about balconies, right? Like on the streets?
Balconies and over, overheight trucks and just fire trucks.
So the balconies won't be over the street.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, my apologies. Yeah, that, that layer got turned off.
Thank, no, thank you for clarifying.
Where would the retail be on the ground floor? What end of the building, or in the middle, or?
Right now, we have it on the southern side, right here. So this is the commercial or retail space. That is, right now, we have it at 2,200. So it'd be right adjacent to the plaza, or also adjacent to the parking lot. So I guess that's one thing we'd have to talk a little bit about, is parking, and how we'd address the actual, you know, commercial or retail consumers, because right now, we have parking that would be sufficient for the actual tenants themselves, but I don't know if we have enough stalls to directly address the commercial or retail space on the site. So having, talking about maybe having some sort of deal on this parking lot would be needed as well.
Because that corner is where there is a bus stop shelter, and because of that, because there are two different bus routes that pass by there, that is an interchange point. Now, obviously, we're not like a big suburban park-and-ride, but, you know, you will have people hanging out down there for sometimes 20 or 30 minutes waiting between buses, and so I'm not saying that's a plus or a minus, it's just that that's something you should take into consideration.
That makes sense, just to provide a space for that, and maybe that becomes part of the plaza, or, you know, yeah, for sure. Security and safety, well lit, but yeah. But actually giving it the physical space, too.
I really like that there's no apartments on the main level. It's the, it's the parking behind it. I'm really concerned about having ground level, so it's good to have everything up and off.
And that was one thing I know we heard was kind of gonna be important, too, is to at least have that, so we go to the, the site plan here, kind of at least have the presence on the ground level, off that there would be some, looks like there's retail. Of course, there wouldn't be, there'd be some kind of faux windows, or, you know, obviously, you know, you'd figure something out, but that's kind of our idea, anyway.
Yeah, I appreciated that touch when I realized, oh, that's the parking.
The one thing I would say about the exterior design is, as I'm looking at that, it just is reminding me of the new building that we have over here with the restaurant and everything, and I would just, believe me, I understand it's a cost thing, but if you can find a way to make it look a little bit different, so that we don't look like we're a cookie cutter, that someone's come in and stamped the same building in three or four different places.
And I think that would just be going, you know, again, feedback is great on that. And as David had mentioned, this is kind of just preliminary architectural drawings, right? So we would add some detail to it as well from here, but...
And like I said, of course, I understand financial law, so it's a big thing of it. You can only do so much.
Like a lot of the stuff that you're doing here, I mean, I'm, I would say I'm more, much more partial to your, your first option. It's a little bit more cleaner, and I like that you're, you have that, you know, stronger mass at the corner there. I think it's, it's a little bit more clean in that first option, personally. I think it's a great spot for the commercial. You know, we're trying, hopefully, to have Sepulvede Boulevard be more of a pedestrian-friendly route, and that, this is a really important node for that, if, we're gonna continue to try and have that happen. So that's a great spot for the commercial. I'm glad to see you've got some two bedrooms in there. That's really good. It's not all just tiny studios, which is awesome. My one wish, and I know I'm kind of going against what has already been said here, but this, it's a really important street frontage here, and I know, you know, you're cramped for space, and, but even, even with, you know, the fenestration you have on there, it's, it's gonna look like a garage, pretty much, with windows, looking into a dark, dirty garage, probably, which is not ideal for the, you know, one of the main streets there. And I think it, the intention is good to get, to make it more, you know, activated, but there really isn't gonna be a whole lot of activation behind there. I know that's kind of a hard ask, because you're already on a very narrow site, and there's not a whole lot you can do there, but that would be my biggest, maybe, question is, is could you just look at maybe another option where you activate that a little bit more, you know, honestly? And I think the, it's just never good to have parking right on the facade, you know, but, but I think generally, it's, it's a really beautiful project, and it would work well here in that, on that site, and, yeah, it's good.
Thank you, too. To address your point, actually, so we, we did a deal pretty much similar in size and kind of structure to this Duluth, and we heard some of the concerns as, as you said. So with the windows, we're not actually gonna be looking into the garage. It's gonna be more just like, you know, kind of iced out, so it's more just kind of like, it looks, or I don't know, I'm sure you can explain better how it made it look more...
Yeah, it'd be like frosted transit, you know. But I, I hear your point, though. What can you do to make it activated with a use and aesthetic for both those, right?
Right, right.
And still provide the parking. I mean, you've identified exactly the crux of the problem. It's a narrow site.
Right.
There's no park, you can't get down, and, yeah.
Right.
Yep, precisely. So, yeah, no, I think it's good feedback.
I mean, even, even if you just, you know, maybe, and I don't know how, you know, what your pro forma says about the number of parking spots you need, but, you know, even if, like a bike room or something, that's a little bit more open to the street and more active, something like that, you know. That's, that's all I got, but...
I wanted to offer a suggestion, and you can cut it down if, if it doesn't... But I'm thinking of the Lily project that we had looked at earlier, and they had those historic panels that they were gonna integrate into the glass, so I don't know if that's, if that would have any impact on this kind of a situation. Do you have any idea what I mean by that? So they have these old images that they were going to somehow transpose onto a glass surface. Their glass surface was looking into a workout room, as opposed to a dark space, so I don't know if that's even feasible, but maybe it's something that you could think about. I don't...
Or some other type of artwork. You know, we've talked about on some buildings, murals. I mean, you can bring interest in a lot of different ways. This one is tough for the parking, unless there were a way to build a ramp, you know, an actual parking ramp on that site. It's pretty tight to accommodate 60-some apartment, you know, units. But I appreciate that as well, and what I was thinking, too, is, I'm trying to get a sense of just how long is the building, because that's what you don't really want to see, is an expanse, as you walk along the street, of just wall, bare wall. That's, you know, totally uninteresting. So, and also, I don't know if anything is in here as we think about Margaret itself, but we, we talked, I think, previously as well about trying to get a better connection, or a clearer connection, between the gateway trail and anything that went on this site, particularly as it comes to like an apartment building or even commercial, including potentially finally getting an actual bike lane. Now, again, we get into the parking issue from vehicle perspective. However, you can have parking and bike lanes on a street, and it can work. So I also think that's potentially something to consider, because that's been a struggle, to try to make that strong connection. So that's one other thing. I agree with what you're saying. It's, it's a tricky one.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's a tough site, and I think, I mean, you guys did a good job
But I actually like the idea of doing something with the windows, some kind of artistic or historical type of thing. I think that's, that's a good idea.
Maybe some, some additional, you know, like groupings of the trees, or, you know, something that breaks up that, that area. Otherwise, that, I could imagine that stretch becoming pretty, you know, kind of mundane, and kind of...
Yeah.
Not a lot of, a lot of interest to it, but to have something that breaks it up, you know, with, you know, plantings or something.
You mentioned the, and it's not now the design, but it kind of relates to it, of course, because of size, but the, the number of studio versus one or two-bedroom apartments, and that that was, you know, based upon input. What was that input, just out of curiosity? Because I noticed there were a lot of studio, primarily.
Yeah, like why, how it came to that determination of doing a lot of studios.
Yeah.
So it's just been in market analysis around the area that we've, we've seen. We've seen that studios have just gone first. You know, everyone that wants to live by themselves wants to have the cheapest apartment possible, right? Especially gonna be in like a suburb like this. So to make it as inexpensive as possible for people, and for places such as North St. Paul, which I saw the downtown market study, which said there's a lot of demand for actually singles coming in and others, working individuals, that are looking for a spot. So studios felt like it was the best use, and I also got input from the other development. It's slipping my mind. What is the one just across the street here? It's Sentinel, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That, all their studios, I actually called them up just out of curiosity, and their studios were the first to go, they told me. So that was kind of the, the main reason why it's kind of studio-heavy versus having a lot of ones or twos, but we did want to include somewhat of a mix.
Yeah. I kind of figured that, but they're more affordable as well.
One thing that, I'm sure you probably have taken it into account, but I just want to make sure, on that south end of the building, remember that you are going to be across the alley from several bars that have back patios and that type of thing. I don't know if we get much in the way of noise complaints down there, because I'm not down there very often, but still, you know, if you're bringing in an influx of younger, single people that may want to go out and party, you might get more party noise coming in on that one wall. So it might be worth doing something to, you know, extra insulation, or trees, or something, just to kind of help keep that quieter. Well, that's true, too. Yeah, that's, that's a good point, too.
Yeah.
That's it, yeah. It is more urban living, like I said.
That's right.
That includes sirens, right?
Like I said, I'm sure you guys have already thought about that. I just wanted to make sure.
And do you have any ideas of the kind of retail or commercial that would fit this sized project?
We don't exactly. We've heard feedback of having some small restaurant or like a coffee shop. I think this is kind of potentially large for just like a small mom-and-pop coffee shop, but those are just kind of the ideas. I think the reason, you know, I think we'd actually prefer to not even have retail in this space, but I know it's definitely a, a huge positive for North St. Paul, and something that you guys are looking for. So I think what we have built into our pro forma is to have this pretty affordable, especially for a new construction space. So it's definitely not making us money. It's more just kind of like an added bonus. So it should be affordable for, you know, somebody within the community to come in. That's kind of our idea, anyway.
Any other comments?
Just appreciate you knowing that the retail, because it's, it's hard to get people used to having, living in downtown, so then there's retail involved, then it's a little bit more stomachable for a lot of people in the community.
And another perspective on the facade, I, I like concept B better, just because of the variety of surfaces that come out of it, and, you know, breaks up that continuous length. There may be other ways to do that, but, you know, I appreciate that part of it.
Thank you. And we were planning on a masonry base, too, so it's like kind of that solid base, more traditional, and then, you know, go back to more siding, more residential, you know. So again, some of the typical things you hope to see.
Anything else?
I guess I had one more question, if I could step in, was...
Sure.
Do you guys see any kind of problems or issues with, you know, getting this through the PUD slash comp plan amendment process for this design?
I don't think with the design so much, but it's always in the details of what's actually proposed on paper. You know, this is a higher level. I, I mean, we've done it before, so it's kind of, what benefit do we get? What do you, you know, what more are we getting than we would normally get out of the project, from a city perspective? And I think that's sometimes where these connections and the, and the aesthetics of it, as well as the commercial aspect, the retail aspect, that's where those come in to play.
And you'd, you'd got mentioned, kind of in the introduction, a little bit, you know, about the open space part of it, and I think that's a real important component that we're concerned about. So, you know, how that would fit in with, with the site, you know, or nearby somewhere that would give people that kind of an amenity.
As far as either... As far as either having a plaza or actually just keeping that as green space, what is your guys' opinion on that? Would you rather have kind of a plaza where the retail could really utilize that for people to hang out, or you really just want that to be green space where it's kind of a green space downtown?
Now that, this is all going to be our personal, each of our personal opinions. And I like that because we may not agree on this. So we'll start down here. Which do you prefer?
I, I think I would push more for some sort of, you know, designed gathering space, whether it can still be green, I would say, but, you know, we have, in the summer, we have big car shows that go on every week here. And, you know, this is, this would be a really big node for people gathering for that as well too. So I, to me, it would be a nice gathering space, more than just, you know, landscape that then people can't really inhabit. Yeah.
I think I would, you know, reflect what Andrew has said. With the addition of, just a concern I have right on the corner there, just to the, the south of Sepulveda on Margaret, it's, you know, it's off this site, but it's, it seems kind of barren to me. And I wouldn't want a continuation of that. I would want something that breaks it up a little bit more and, and add some variety. So that's the neighbor to the south. So that, to me, I guess implies some, you know, definitely some greenery. But I like the concept of having outdoor space that kind of continues from the retail space.
Our agreement as well. I think definitely be able to bring that out. And a lot of people are out down there outside. Beautiful place to be. So I agree. We can expand that out.
We may all be.
I know, let's move on here.
We might all agree on this. Don't you?
I, I agree. A plaza with some tastefully done landscaping. I think, I don't know, patios are nice for, you know, we worked hard to partner with our downtown businesses on outdoor furniture and encouraging using some outdoor spaces. And I think this, this plaza you've got, it's not a very big plaza, but I think it could be an amenity for you guys. So I like it.
Yeah, I would tend to lean that direction myself. I would certainly say, don't have something that's like primarily concrete and tile out there because if nothing else, you'll probably have some problems with kids rollerblading or bicycling or skateboarding there. But if you have a little bit more of a park-like with some greenery, that would probably cut that down.
Well, I think you got pretty consistent input. Anything else that has occurred to anyone? One thing, actually, you mentioned about it, you know, coming through as a PUD as well. And I will just once again, I did mention the gateway trail, but I'll mention once again, talk pedestrians, but bike parking is also something in bike use, which, which in our code at least, can impact and reduce the amount of vehicle parking that's required for a good, obvious reason. So that's also something to consider as you finish up your plans. Plus, the proximity to the bus stop is a plus.
Yeah. The 64 route runs from downtown St. Paul out to Maplewood Mall, and it actually has fairly decent service, especially for the east side of St. Paul. So, you know, that, I don't know that that's an amenity that you'd want to tout, but it certainly is something that can't hurt.
It gives people a transportation option right out your front door.
Exactly.
You can just walk out, get in the bus, be in downtown.
Yep.
Instantly, right? So I think it, it's something that is amenity. And we definitely would be providing, you know, we're always providing bike parking. It's just what shape, where it is, how much, you know.
Right.
For sure.
Right.
And I'm kind of curious about the connection, you know, if there are along, you know, that bike connection, like, you know, we'll have to have conversations if there is anything on Margaret that, what, you know, what is the desired, you know, boulevard? What's that looking like? And so like, that's a good, excited to have those conversations with kind of.
Yeah. In fact, I'm trying to remember, I think either the federal DOT or HUD offered and may still offer financing for projects that could be transit related. So you might find some additional lower cost financing that way if you look into that.
Sounds good. Do you want to add anything, Lisa? You've been quiet.
Yeah. I think one thing that we had discussed at the council meeting was housing affordability, and that's really consistent with the comp plan. I appreciate the focus on the studio aspect. That was a big piece that was missing. And also, I think, considering housing for, you know, some of the other gaps, maybe 50 to 80 AMI range. So really considering integrating some affordable housing.
Had you considered that?
We have considered that actually. So, I mean, not necessarily concerned with this group, but part of this deal is to get some affordability in there. Obviously needing a trade off of having some sort of tiff on the project is what we've talked about before. So, yeah, getting a good balance between that is what we're looking at.
Yeah. Good. Okay. All right. Unless anybody has anything else, I guess that's about what we can give you for this evening.
Thank you very much.
And we'll probably see you back in a couple months.
That'd be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll go back now to the public hearing, which is the, for a minor subdivision lot split, actually, at 2170 Eldridge Avenue East. So Brandy, you want to provide the staff report?
I think you all have a little bit of background on this project, but I'll reiterate it for, for the general public. The, the city and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority entered into agreement earlier this summer in June to acquire the property 2170 Eldridge Avenue. And the plan at the time was to demolish the, the structure that you see behind the trees and the shrubs there, because it was deemed to be in substandard condition, and to replace it with two brand new homes to be built by the Student Built Housing Program at Century College. So in order to accomplish that goal, the lot will need to be subdivided to accommodate two principal structures. So the subdivision ordinance exempts plats containing three lots or fewer from the preliminary plating requirements. And as such, we're going to process this as a minor subdivision, which isn't necessarily spelled out in the subdivision ordinance, but the process that has been sort of established informally is to bring it to Planning Commission for review and recommendation, and then it will go to City Council for public hearing in action. So this is the first step in that process, and it will probably be going to City Council. We'll have to post it. So it might be in the first meeting in, in November to allow enough time for, for publication and mailing of the notices. The subject site is Zoned R1, Single Family, and staff evaluated the proposed lot split against the R1 standards and found that it met all of the requirements dimensionally for, for two lots. And you can see sort of the historic plat underneath of it. This was actually three lots at some point in the past. So in review of the subdivision ordinance, subdivision, subdivisions require that new lots be connected to city water and sewer, as well as stormwater disposal. And the image shows the existing sanitary and water lines. There's an eight inch sanitary main and a six inch water main located in Eldridge Avenue, and both of them are adequate to serve the two single family homes. Because this is a simple subdivision in an existing neighborhood, there's no streets proposed. And the ordinance requires that sidewalks be installed per the comp plan. And within the comp plan, there is actually no sidewalks proposed for this street. And thus, none is proposed as part of the subdivision. The ordinance does require parkland dedication. This project would create an additional lot. So cash and lieu at a rate of $900 per lot is recommended as a set aside since the city-owned property to be contributed to the park fund. And the city engineer reviewed the plat against, against engineering standards and has requested that drainage and utility easements be depicted on the plat, but otherwise didn't have any comments. So per Minnesota statute, the Planning Commission reviewed this proposal back in June at a special meeting at the end of the month. And if you recall at that time, you determined that the land split would advance the comp plan housing goal of enhancing neighborhood value and quality housing options and, and types at all price points. And it was further acknowledged by the Planning Commission that the new homes would be built, that would be built would enhance the neighborhood. So the recommendation of staff is to recommend approval of the minor subdivision plat of 2170 East Eldridge Avenue, subject to the approval conditions in the draft resolution. And that is.
Any conclusion? Questions of staff?
Yeah, just one question. Has the building, building been demolished?
I believe so. Okay. Yeah, I think I heard Brian.
It's been done there.
Yeah, I think he said that the, the foundation has started at least and.
Yeah, just, they're working with the school, as you know, and it started.
Probably about a month ago.
Or, I think end of August and then the first two weeks they're in class and then they start working.
I just wanted to clarify the process here because this is the public hearing.
Correct.
That's associated with it.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I did get confused with that.
We don't need too public.
Right.
Because when you mentioned the notice for the council, I thought, what would you have the notice?
I was confusing you with the Burwell project, if you remember that from earlier. If it was this year, maybe last year, Burwell had two public hearings.
Oh, oh, oh.
Because we processed that one as a plat.
Okay.
And your ordinance requires a public hearing at the council, I think, for plats, which is a little bit unusual.
Well, they've delegated that essentially, I think. They do the, at least in the past.
Okay. Well, we double dipped in that process.
So we've noticed this as a public hearing.
I, I think we did, yes.
Okay.
Okay. She, she remembers mailing out those letters.
Okay, then. You're also the applicant on behalf of the city, so I'm not going to ask you to add anything else unless you want to. And then I'll just move into opening the public hearing portion at 7:12 for any public input. We don't, everybody in the room? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
No.
Okay, then I'll close the public hearing at 7:12 PM. And the Planning Commission will discuss it. I did want to ask one thing before I forget though, or just get one thing clarified. And that's on the language about the park dedication fee on page five of 23.
Mm-hmm.
And the last sentence says, "Staff recommends collection of $900 or a set aside in the city's park improvement fund of the same amount." If this is done as a park dedication fee, it needs to go into that special fund, the park dedication fund.
Are you asking, or?
Pardon me?
Are you asking for clarification or are you telling?
Yeah, I'm just asking for clarification. Is that what we're talking about is transferring money?
I believe that's how it would work with.
Into the park dedication fund?
I, I think that's how it would work with the finance department.
Okay.
But I can get clarification for.
Yeah, because it, it didn't, it just said the city's park improvement fund, and we've got several of those.
Oh, okay.
But the park dedication fund is specifically for park dedication fees.
Okay, then that can be cleaned up.
Okay, yeah.
For, for the resolution. Thank you for that clarification.
No, that's okay. I just wasn't sure. Anybody have anything to discuss on this one? I think it's pretty.
Yeah, I think it.
Pretty gutted, right? Since we've seen this lot before.
Yep.
So if there's no further discussion, then I will entertain a motion to recommend the council approve the proposed, what are we calling it? Minor subdivision plat with the conditions included in the staff report.
So move.
Second. I was getting a little worried there that I'd have to repeat that.
I just read down a little farther. It says it's going to be October 18th is the meeting. So I just saw that.
Second by John. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alrighty, that passes. Alrighty.
Didn't mean to leave you hanging, sorry.
Oh, no. It was just kind of, yeah. Is nobody going to second this? Alrighty, then we'll move down to the old business, sign ordinance enforcement. Brandy, you're on again.
Okay, I put a memo in here. Here it is. So after adoption of our sign code, as I think we all probably expected, there is going to be an amendment or two that we'll face. And so the first one for consideration is whether or not we should alter the setback of non, or sorry, yeah, non-permanent signs, such as the one that we see in the, in the image, if it's a city-owned, city-planted sign for city purposes. This was brought up to the mayor about a week or two ago, maybe about three weeks at this point. And so I kind of outlined the, the issue in the, in the short memo, and then also put together a couple of options. So we could, we could take no action and just continue to, to enforce the ordinance, but make sure that staff is aware that there is a new ordinance and that if they see signs in the right-of-way to, to pull them as appropriate. Or we could do an amendment if that seems like the appropriate choice. We could alter the setback for city-specific, non-permanent signs. We could do it for all non-permanent signs because by calling it a city sign, we're touching on that read versus the, gosh, I can't remember the name of that court case.
Gilbert.
Gilbert, Gilbert hearing. And then, any other options that, that you care to discuss tonight are kind of open. And I will take notes.
For clarity, can you tell me, did, in the example that's shown, was there an option where the city could have placed the sign according to the existing?
I don't know exactly where this sign was put. I would imagine that if they wanted to put it anywhere on city property. Gosh, I don't, I don't, I don't know how to answer that because I'm not sure where this was. But if you're thinking if it was going to be on any right-of-way or any intersection, it's probably going to have private property, in which case you're not going to be able to advertise whatever it is. It's going to be limiting the locations.
The edge of the right-of-way and then.
Mm-hmm. Correct. So.
Well, right-of-way is still not really technically the standard. It's the 10-foot from the street.
Correct.
So right-of-way could be 20 feet, could be 15 feet, like it is on my street.
So there would be an option.
On my half of the street.
Yep. So, well, 10 feet's, I'm not sure what you're asking.
So, so 10 feet from the edge of the street.
Yep.
And then there may be additional right-of-way, and that would be a valid place to put the sign.
There could be.
There could be.
I'm not sure. How many situations?
The reason I ask this question is I wonder if it's an issue of education more than an issue of whether or not the ordinance is what it is that we want. Is it a matter of people understanding what the new standard is and applying that appropriately? Or is it, is it, we're running into this situation where 10 feet back is private property?
Mm-hmm.
And so there isn't an option to, you know, to put a sign there. Not that we need to necessarily allow signs everywhere. And so, so I think that'd be a worthwhile discussion is, what are we, what are we dealing with here? Are we dealing with the education issue? Or are we dealing with a ordinance issue?
When I heard it down in City Hall, that is the case. That it's more of an education. The best that I got was volunteers that put these out and they weren't aware of the ordinance in City Hall.
I have to admit, you know, I was not part of the original discussions on the sign ordinance, so I may be asking some. sign ordinance, so I may be asking something here that was discussed ad nauseam. But after I saw this, you know, I have been noticing more where signs are placed. And most of them are within a foot or two of the curb line. And I'm wondering, rather than going out and start writing masses of tickets and getting people upset with us, is there perhaps a, an additional clause we could put in that says, you know, the non-permanent signs of less than so many inches high or something could be put within two feet of the curb? Uh, you know, something that would, where the sign would not obstruct vision of motorists and that type of thing, but where people can put their, uh, you know, their political advertising signs and, and that type of thing, so that they're fairly easily seen from the street. Because I don't think a lot of these people are going to put them on the backside of the sidewalk, uh, or pace out 10 feet, you know, unless we come down pretty hard on them. So I, I'm just wondering if there's some sort of a compromise there.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. I definitely agree, there's an issue there. Maybe we ought to be talking a little bit about what it is our concern was, and you kind of touched on it, Cameron, in terms of, uh, a safety issue. Uh, is it more than a safety issue in terms of, you know, is it obscuring, uh, traffic, causing problems in that way? If it is, you know, obscuring things, then, then I'm more inclined to see us maintain what it is that we have. If it's, um, just a matter of, of, you know, well, it's not really obscuring things. If it's, you know, the two-foot square sign, um, my concern with that is that then we're putting another condition on, you know, yeah, they could have a, you know, uh, I, I forget what the limits were, but my three-by-six or something like that. And then, then we've just shifted where the, um, you know, the violations occur. You know, oh, they got a big sign and it's close to the curb. Well, then, then we've got another problem. Maybe it's less of a problem, but it still would be a problem.
Well, I think that in the residential, the non-permanent, I think the maximum height is four feet. I think.
I was just looking at freestanding non-permanent.
Yeah, yeah.
From the ground to the top of the sign is six, six feet.
Pardon me?
Six feet, does that sound right?
Oh, six? I thought it was three. Uh, or I thought it was four, actually. No, they can have four signs, that's right. That's right.
Even, even four-foot would be high enough to be able to obscure from like a.
I know, and.
A small car.
Most of that really was just, I mean, there's two pieces. One is just to avoid all that clutter because we don't have a time limit anymore on non-permanent signs, on how long they can be displayed. So, you know, we base it now on really how they look, you know, the maintenance of them. So part of it is just the, the look of littering up with a lot of signs, assuming people would do that. Some probably would, some, most wouldn't. But there is also the issue of the size we now allow. I mean, we did increase the amount of signage and the height that are allowed on a residential property. I personally, that's just me personally, I wouldn't have a problem reducing the from-the-street setback to something like three feet, only because that still leaves a portion of the right-of-way if somebody wants to use it for walking, which they can, you know, next to the street. Or if you park your car and you don't want to be banging into someone's sign as you're trying to open your door, because that just makes the sign degrade a lot quicker than it normally would. So I, I, I'm just trying to think of, you know, what you could do as kind of a compromise because we would not go out and all of a sudden start coming down.
Yeah.
On people. I do see a lot of signs that meet the 10 feet, they go beyond the 10 feet. And those are very visible, they're more actually visible in some cases than the ones closer to the street. So it's, it's one of those tricky things. I mean, I could go either way. I could say we don't, let's see what happens if we start having a whole lot of problem once we educate people, because I don't think we made any effort really to do that. Or I'd be okay with looking at an amendment to reduce, I wouldn't go as close as a foot myself, just because. And I, I think two-feet's a little tight as well. I mean, I'd be, three-feet seems reasonable, not unreasonable.
Could we just?
Something to discuss.
Yeah, no, could we do something like, uh, give two different heights of the non-permanent signs? It's like, you know, you could go up to, I don't know, 30 inches or 36 inches off the ground and be closer, but if you want something taller, it has to be further back.
I don't know that there's a lot of benefit in doing.
Okay.
That, my personal feeling now.
I don't know that there is either, I'm just.
Yeah, we try, we tried to keep this really simple.
No, and there's, you know, I understand, there is a huge benefit to keeping things simple.
Well, and if we look at the example, I suspect that's within the two-foot distance.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't know if it is or not.
From a practical standpoint, I think what I've seen in the community is more of that one foot, um, from the.
Yeah. And that's tight.
That is.
That's tight.
If you don't mind me jumping in here, um, in response to your, your suggestion, I know that we're trying to keep it simple, but I kind of like where he's going. If we, and maybe the same clause under freestanding, we have the setback limit adjusted to two or three feet, but then for those that are specific, for those that would specifically be that close, they would have to be limited in size to like a two-by-three. Because otherwise, if you look up at the chart, freestanding signs in, in the MU districts can be 250 to 300 square feet, and we definitely want those setback at least 10 feet.
Do we, I'm trying to think, do we differentiate by residential and, and business right now? And, and the other districts?
We, we separate by land uses, single-family, two-family, multifamily, and then non-residential. And then we permanent and non-permanent.
So when we're, we could do this for residential, we could do it as well for non-residential is what you're saying. I think that's where you have to really start thinking about, if you're going to change it, what you change it to. Because for a, a non-residential, little tiny signs, not real typical.
Well, and come to think of it, now, this is opening a whole can of worms. The table is referring to land uses, and those land uses are assigned to private property. And these signs that we're talking about are going in the right-of-way.
Well, yes, but that's an easement, that's an easement kind of issue, just like a driveway.
Is the right-of-way assigned to land use that's adjacent to it?
Is it a separate land use?
Well, if you look at the land use map, it is, it's one.
It's one, okay. So the right-of-way in front of QuickTrip is, uh, commercial, okay. Just stirring the pot.
Yeah, you can get really.
Yeah, yeah.
Specific about that stuff. I, I think it, it's worth discussing, and I, I think maybe we want to.
Give it a month and go back.
Well, discuss, because there's another issue that has come up as well, that, um, Brandy emailed me about, and I think talking about if, if potentially we want to make two changes, maybe we don't, but if we want to, then it makes sense not to do one and then two months later do another, because they all require the public hearing and all that goes with it. So I would suggest just kind of share that other one, and then it's something that we can all think about. And as you drive around town, take a look at, you know, what you see. As far as signs and placement.
Going along with that notion, I think there's some risk in, you know, if, if we were to say, okay, let's go out and educate everybody, and then we decide that, no, that didn't work, now we'll change the ordinance.
Yeah.
Now we got to educate them to something else.
Right, exactly.
That creates a lot of confusion and.
Well, I think in terms of education, um, the sign in question was a city sign, and it was specifically targeted because this is your ordinance, you need to follow your rules, and that makes sense. So I think just making sure that we know what our own rules are and enforcing them is.
Right.
Makes sense.
Right.
And then as far as, um, if we keep the code as is, and we do want to be strict about it, instead of issuing citations, we could just pull the signs, and then when they call, let them know why it was pulled.
Yeah.
I think we do, really do need to consider a change. On my way back from daycare today, uh, I drive through part of St. Paul, Maplewood, and North St. Paul, and in every community, there are signs just like this, whether they're election signs, um, real estate signs, garage sale signs. I just think, I think holding ourselves and our residents to that 10-foot mark is, I think, unworkable, even with an education piece. I just think it'd be easier, or it, I think it's less impactful to consider this three-foot guidance with maybe a smaller sign. I think we should really chew on that.
Well, and I think that the fact is, most cities do have sign setbacks, but it's not something that gets enforced. It's probably, it's like any kind of ordinance that you have, unless you get a complaint, you don't do anything about it. So, I, I mean, I agree, I see the same thing, no matter where you go. And I know some of those other city ordinances, and what, you know, what people are doing isn't allowed, but you don't spend a lot of time on that. I would rather have something that it's likely people would follow, once they know what it is. That, I think, is just the better approach. You know, if it's not unreasonable, and then I think you go with it. But I also think you do keep it simple, as simple as you possibly can. So I'm not opposed to the idea of having a, okay, if you have this little sign, that's okay, but that tends to get people confused then. Or they don't, you know, they see somebody doing it, well, they're doing it, why can't I, but they have a larger sign. It's, again, that whole education and what you have to deal with. So I can see the benefit of that.
Yeah.
So something to think about.
My biggest concern is with the, with the idea of we have something on the, on the books, but we only enforce it when somebody complains, is having lived down south where HOAs rule supreme, and so many HOAs get somebody who has nothing better to do than to go out and nitpick about every square inch of property. And, you know, that's, that's the one thing, I just want to make sure that, you know, if somebody decides, oh, I've, you know, I'm going to go out and start measuring everything and filing dozens of complaints with the city when I find something doesn't work. I would like to not put the city in that kind of position.
Well, to my knowledge, it's never happened on anything, but you never know. But again, you just don't know. But anyway, why don't you share the other sign-related, um, situation?
Sure. Did you have something to?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just one more comment, and maybe it's a bit tongue, yeah, it's a bit tongue-in-cheek. You know, if, if we go with the one-foot distance, then the snowplows could manage the number of signs that we have.
Well, they would just get rid of them, and we wouldn't have to worry about them.
We just, we just tell them to put out the wings when they're plowing, right?
That's why, I kind of like the three-foot for a couple reasons. One of them is that. The other is the number of people I see walking their dog on my street, and their dogs are in the right-of-way. You know, because they walk along the grass rather than on their little leashes, rather than out into the traffic. And I think, well, they don't need to be tangled up in signs.
Yeah, no.
Or using them as a fireplug.
Before we leave this discussion, I just want to ask, um, I'm going to pull it up here, but it'll take me a second. If we're measuring from the curb, three feet back from the curb, do you think that's going to fall on top of the sidewalk?
Well, in some cases it might, in some cases it wouldn't. It kind of depends on, I mean, we've got sidewalks all over the place and different widths and everything else. Yeah, that's a corner thing too, which makes that one, it's obviously a corner, makes it a little different.
Well, much.
But even if you did a foot, there are some.
Yeah.
Places where there's side rock right next to the street, because that's what we're doing now. So the, you know.
So the only practical place to put it is back on the other side of the side.
Yeah, yeah.
Not the street side.
Right.
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 Okay. All right, so the other issue that we encountered, we had a sign permit come in this week for, uh, a restaurant in the McKnight Plaza, which is by the Mo's Asian Market, um, Tropical Market.
Yeah.
And a couple of, a couple of issues with this one. I had trouble interpreting the ordinance, and I'm still not entirely clear on, on the size that is allowed for the entire multi-tenant site. That's one. Two, there is no multi-tenant sign plan for that structure and probably most of the multi-tenant buildings that we have in the city. And it's onerous for the property owners to, to do that without starting from scratch and costly. And really, they leave it up to the tenants to deal with their own signage. So that's, um, something to consider. I think this would be a, a place where we probably do definitely want to make an amendment to the ordinance, is try to be a little bit more flexible for the tenants. And maybe define a percentage of the tenant space as their, as their sign area, as opposed to a, a flat square footage, um, because every building, every multi-tenant building is going to be a different size and have different street-side facing sides. This one happens to face two streets, but all the tenant spaces face internally to the target, you know, parking area. And so there's a lot of opportunities for signs on that building, and there actually are on all sides. So I think, I think how it's written, the total number of sign area, the total sign area might be a little small, um, if we're talking about the building specifically as opposed to the tenant space. So in this particular instance, in order to be, um, friendly to the, to the applicant and help, help keep them going, we opted to interpret it as the, um, the square footage maximum was for tenant space versus the building, and that worked for them. But I think that clearing it up is going to make everybody a little more comfortable at the staff level.
And that's something that did, well, the concept of the master sign plan and how it worked, that was a carryover, obviously, from the prior code. So we didn't spend a lot of time discussing that. The change that was made, um, in the new code was, in most cases, to increase the amount of signage that was allowed, um, and not dictate the portion that could, the maximum portion that could be wall signage. That was, that was in the prior code, um, but that was eliminated. So in essence, this is a case where nothing, nothing, the maximum amount, amount allowed didn't change, um, in this particular example. So it kind of comes down to, is that the correct maximum? And I also did, just because, um, I don't think a lot of people are aware of it, because we've never really gotten into signs in the planning commission, because those had been reviewed by the Design Review Commission previously. So those permits didn't come to us. If there were any questions or issues to be resolved, and in some cases, my expectation is there were adjustments made, just kind of arbitrarily. So we might have more situations out there where, um, the existing standards aren't even being met. Certainly, the lack of master sign plans kind of indicates that wasn't, you know, necessarily followed.
There are also signs on, at that location that didn't have permits.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a tough one. But now that, um, essentially, the planning commission also does the design review piece, it kind of makes sense for us to dive into something like that and really take a look at, is the, are these good numbers for the multi-tenant? And I, I think Patrick had a good sense of it. He didn't seem concerned, and he was on the Design Review Commission. He didn't seem concerned with, um, you know, the numbers as they were. So maybe, I, I certainly would want him as part of the discussion, because he could shed light maybe on something that isn't clicking for me.
So to get around, or to get around to help, you just did it per unit instead of per complex?
Per site. Per site.
Per site.
Yeah.
Is that something that could be permanent?
I'm sorry, I was reading, can you repeat that?
That was per unit instead of per comp, for the whole complex, right? Is that how you got around that right now to get them their sign?
Correct, that's how I interpreted it. I was just looking at the old ordinance.
Is that something that could be done that way? If that, if that worked out for these people, would it work out for other people in that, for that kind of situation, or not? If we break it down per address or per unit instead of per whole complex?
We could, but then, the only reason I'm hesitating is because the maximum sign area was listed at 300 square feet, which in this particular case is, it's a lot of sign for this spot on the building. So, it could lead us to having situations where there's just too much signage. So a percentage, I think, of a defined.
Like the window signs we did, like, was it percentage?
Yep.
The window signs in the bar to help, was it like 50% or something of?
I think it might be 30.
30%.
It was more than what it was before. And now that I'm looking at the old ordinance, this is almost verbatim to what it was before, with the exception of the sign area. So the sign area, it looks like it was just referring back to whatever kind of sign it was. So depending on if you had a window sign or a freestanding sign or whatever, that was how much signage you could have, versus now, it's kind of all combined into the one table, which is why it's a little bit confusing from the staff interpretation perspective. So I think we could investigate different options for how to deal with these. Multi-tenant sign plan may, may not be the way to, the way to go, just because it is one of those management things that probably the property owners don't really necessarily want to deal with, and.
Well, another example of this unit itself is the backside that faces towards 11th is all signs besides the front side.
Right.
So now we're adding up, which a lot of places don't have a backside signage.
Right. So I think we might need to
We do ours by street.
Do a little research and.
Exactly.
Do we have a different zoning code for these multi-tenant businesses as opposed to, or is it just all commercial regardless? Or does this fall under a different?
Do we have different standards for, no, I don't, can you give me an example of what you're thinking of?
Well, all right, you know, these are what I would call strip malls.
Yep.
So do they fall under a different zoning than, you know, a freestanding business or something to that effect?
No, we would regulate it the same as you would with any other building, so the setbacks are the same. The parking would be, at the time of permit, would probably be established based on the intended uses at the time. So if it's probably going to be a restaurant space, then you would kind of base it on the size of the, of the interior.
I'm wondering if, on a longer term, I'm not talking about immediate, because this is an immediate thing, but could we offer some sort of an incentive to people that are building multiple tenant, tenant businesses to put up a pylon sign? You know, give them some incentive to do that as opposed to, you know, putting up, letting, letting their own tenants put up their own individual signs? Is there some way we could kind of focus that so that this doesn't, isn't as likely to occur in the future?
This one has a pylon sign as well as.
I think it might have two.
And most of them do, so does Polar Plaza and, what else? Those are probably the only, what I would call strip, well, no, even the little chiropractor daycare place across from Target has a pylon sign, now that I think about it. It's kind of interesting.
Yeah, in lieu of the master sign plan, if they wanted to do a pylon, I think the building owner itself would probably be the applicant and then they would, you know, just submit their site plan for that pylon. And it would be, I don't know, we have to, we have to think about this, how it's going to play out in terms of.
Yeah, but I guess these, these are, these are signs also that you identify which door is which, once you get inside the.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly. So they don't need to be huge.
Yeah, yeah.
Because usually there's that pylon sign that I, is the large.
Yeah, for some reason, I was thinking you were saying a lot of the places don't do pylon signs, but I must have misheard something.
Oh, no, I think they, they do. Well, if it's not a pylon, then it would be one of the monument-style signs. It has all of the different, the businesses on it.
I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
Maybe, maybe we could have as a separate sign category, except, well, I don't know. No, this is open in a hurricane or, these sign ordinances.
Well, there's plenty to think about.
Yeah.
And I, I think it is something to just kind of think about, and again, you know, kind of pay attention as you're driving around, maybe look at the, the strip malls and, you know, we don't have a whole lot of them, so it's, it's not too much to just kind of glance at them and see how, what does the signage look like? I'm guessing we probably have a number that exceed what the old requirement was, which means it would probably exceed what the new one is, even though it's, might be slightly higher in some cases. But it's probably a good thing to, to get a handle on as well, is to figure out, what do we have now in the way of total signage in these places, both in Polar, although there are some empty, you know, shops there, so it's a little tricky, but you've got the pylon and you can kind of get a feel for where the signs were, as well as the one, I don't even know what we call it, the one by Target.
McKnight Plaza, I think.
Oh, McKnight Plaza, that's right, that's right. So if we can maybe get some kind of idea of what's out there, even.
I think that's a good idea. And then another thing that many multi-tenant strip mall structures have in common, and I think a lot of them at least, they generally have like this standardized band that goes across the top, which is where signs are intended to go. So if we could figure out if there's a way to determine, if, if we can come up with, like, you shall define the area within which signs can go, and then based on that, then you can come up with a certain percentage or maybe even square foot for that area, but it would be building-specific. Yeah, because that, that Polar Pla, not Polar, the McKnight one, definitely has that band, and I bet you the Polar Plaza does, too. They all seem to have that same style.
It's just that all of the units aren't always the same.
Sure.
Sometimes they get combined, they get split, so it's, it's some, again, it's something to consider. So I would just say maybe think on it, all of us, and then it's something to bring up again in November, maybe, for discussion, if we don't have piles of other stuff.
The other thing this makes me think about, though, too, is in the downtown area, and I don't know, I don't think we've got anything like this downtown now, but classically, you know, it wasn't unusual for the second floor of a commercial building to have an entirely different commercial operation on that second floor. So, you know, if we've got buildings like in the downtown that are not, you know, their own separate building, but they're renting out to different tenants, how do we handle that? You know, the one thing I can think of is, I think, in that row of second stories up above Rowdy's, somebody had a political sign up there. And, you know, I, I don't know whether they were political supporter or whether that was the local office for that, for that person that was running for president, but, you know, let, let's say that somebody is doing that kind of thing, you know. What do we do for that second-story sign? That's a completely different business than the business that's on the, on the ground floor.
I would just like to say thanks to the staff for helping them out and not saying it didn't, for the signage, put a big block on it and say sorry. So I'm glad you were able to have a compromise and not, you know, delay.
Yeah, we tried to figure out a way to, creative thinking around this one.
That's what we do.
Well, I mean, if it's possible, and clearly, without a master sign plan that was, which was really the basis for how that allocation was supposed to be made, it was the property owner, you know, who was really the one who was supposed to do that, but there was a caveat in the code that if that wasn't done, then the city could allocate the area for signs based upon whatever. I can't remember what the two, you know, two possibilities were, but one was certainly the, the size of the structure, so to speak. So there was a way to get around the fact that that was, there wasn't a plan. So anyways, is any, everybody okay if you have any other, really creative ideas? Write them down and bring them to the next meeting.
Do we need to make a motion to table this for the next meeting, or?
No, there was no action on this.
I'm thinking of the Sloan one on 35E, where all the doctors.
I mean, unless you want us to make a motion.
No, but if you, if you could give me direction on, on that first, so I, I understand, we're going to, we're going to look at it, staff's going to research this multi-tenant issue, but if, if there's direction that you think that we should take for the, the other issue?
Well, one thing would be, unless it's something egregious, that, you know, not to, not to concern yourself with enforcing the setback, unless it really is a distraction or, you know, a safety kind of issue, until we've had time to really look through the issue. Is that a possible approach?
So put a pin in both of them and you guys will digest it for the next month and then hold another sign ordinance discussion?
Yeah. If that's okay with everyone.
Yeah, I think it's a pretty, this specific instance is probably a very rare.
Yeah.
It was only because it was a city sign and I think typically it wouldn't even probably have been an issue, but.
We just finished our sign.
Right.
Rules is like, okay, here you go, people, right away.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and it was, you know, parade time and bougie time, time when all the signs go out. Alrighty. Okay. Then on to reports from staff. Anything else, either Brandy or Lisa?
We're working on a variance request for a cell tower height extension, so I'm not sure if we'll have all of the information we need for that for the November meeting, but that's on the docket.
Interesting, okay. Not acceptable. Hey, we're not going to approve your resignation. We're going to recommend the council deny this. Well, we'll be sorry to see you.
Yeah. Thank you, Lisa, for everything.
You didn't even have a party. Yeah.
I know, and it, it came out of the blue a month ago, I was not even considering and an opportunity came along and the circumstances were right.
Okay. Well, good luck wherever you land with this new opportunity.
Thank you for all your, your help and
Yeah, for all your work.
Getting us organized all the time.
Herding cats.
Thank you.
Good at herding cats here.
I say we give her a round of applause.
Well, she deserves more than that. Okay, well, that's a bummer, so on to reports from council liaison.
Yeah, I had earlier alluded to a housing study, but I think it may be of interest to this group here, kind of what the needs assessment, particularly in the downtown, is. But it does look like, I had mentioned some different income levels and then also a lot more senior housing. So that's just kind of what we had been looking at and that's what our presentation was on. The other thing is the community center is moving along and so they'll be, we'll be contracting with WOLD and they'll take us through a process in which they're going to engage a lot more community and different stakeholders to make a decision on what the community center is going to be in the future. So, and then, I think that's about it. And then council last night approved the text amendment and the density bonus and, and your recommendations from the prior meeting, so.
Yeah, and that's another thing, sorry to jump in, that staff is working on us getting that processed with the Met Council, that, that comprehensive plain amendment.
Thank you.
What are the options that they're looking at with the rec center?
I think they're still exploring what the different options are, but as of now, from the public forum, the discussion was largely around youth and senior activities and then potentially some level of maybe, well, keeping the library was important, too, I think, to folks. And then potentially, maybe a private-public partnership, but it's something that's going to be explored here in the next, I think, year. Yes.
That was decided in the summer sometime, or some time ago, if I recall.
Mm-hmm, yep, yeah. And so we were able to also extend our contract with our current tenant volleyball team through June, so we still have some, you know, flexibility with them as well.
So is, the housing study, is that available online, in case any commissioners want to?
Yeah, it should be on the workshop agenda from last, this past Tuesday.
I'll forward it via email.
Oh, thank you.
And I had glanced through it and it seemed, it seemed quite in line with the bigger picture from the comp plan.
Yep.
Which was encouraging. It's like, oh, good, then, because that was done back in, really started back in 2018. So, over the course of three or four years, you might expect, maybe there's been some big changes, but there don't appear to have been as far as the needs go. So, that, I thought, was a plus.
I certainly hope there's been no discussion of getting rid of the library.
No.
To me, that's one of the, that's one of the key cor, key cornerstones of having a downtown city different from the suburbs that it were.
Yeah, I think we have our agreement with the county to have that library through, I think, 2030? I don't know, that date was kind of in flux for a long time, but I think they decided on something, I think it's 2030. And so, you know, it's possible that there may be a partnership that extends beyond that or what have you, but who knows?
Was there talk about maybe expanding the library a little bit, I heard something?
There was some discussion, I'm not sure, you know, whereabouts that came from, so, but, that news, but also one thing is considering partnership with the school. So, that's another aspect of the community center they're looking at.
Okay. Any other questions of the council liaison? If not, we'll move to reports from commissioners. And first, I'll do John, because you started to say something about Highway 36, you know, a couple of minutes ago when we were talking about signs, and then I got off, I asked.
I don't remember saying anything about 36.
Oh, you don't, okay, okay. You forgot it already. Or I misheard. Let's say I misheard, that's better. Okay, then on to reports from commissioners. Uh, let's see, I guess we'll start with Andrew.
I have nothing for today.
Okay.
Bouya was very successful. I was down there for the Bouya, that was, that was a really great turnout, a lot of, a lot of good, Bouya, we still have some?
You still have some?
Yeah, we got a couple cords of it. Yeah, so it was very good, they did, they had a great turnout. It was, it was, it was really fun to see.
I just want to thank Lisa and wish her well.
Yes.
I don't know how we'll move along as well without you. I have nothing.
Nothing else? I don't have anything, other than our next meeting is November 3rd. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and also say thank you to Lisa and definitely good luck. Not that you need luck, I'm sure you'll do very well. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Rick, second by John, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? We're adjourned at seven, eight o'clock, just turned. Look at that.
What would happen if I opposed it? What would happen if I opposed it?